And with that, I'm calling this study session to order and what we'll do is go around the table and introduce ourselves and I'll start with Julie.
Yeah, so my name is Julie, I'm city staff. I just kind of want to try to unwind, just saying that, I'm sorry. Human services.
Welcome.
And Debbie Hertzach, city council.
I'm Samantha Gomans, part of the human services department.
Christina Solis, city council.
Monty Javi, newest member of the.
Jeff Wagner, I'm your mayor of Covington.
Debbie Jacobson, chair of human services commission.
Beth Porter, Covington city council members. Catherine Williams, our human services commission.
Just Momo, city council.
Jennifer Hardt, council in city council.
Ringo Bolle, city.
And we have two individuals, so Krista and Darren, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
This ten.
Darren Batterston, community care specialists.
Great, welcome. Great to see everybody here tonight and we're here to discuss human services and we have three hours for discussion, I'm going to turn this over to our great leader of our human services committee, Debbie.
Thank you. So. Going to recap, twenty twenty-three, every year has been very interesting with COVID, we've had to really pivot with everything that we've been working on and adjust our sales, but it's it's gone well. This year was really, we were kind of wondering if we're gonna have anything to do really meaningful, because we really couldn't buy into the community as much and we just weren't sure how impactful we were going to be as collectively the group. The opportunities kept coming as a result of COVID, I mean, that we hadn't anticipated, and one of those is the opportunity to help provide input for the community care specialist role. We spent a great deal of time and effort on that discussing collectively with our personal experiences and our professional experiences and what that role could potentially look like. And elements of it that we understood would be valuable to the police department after having them visit us on several occasions for the last few years. And then all of us have a wealth of social work and community outreach and a lot of different experiences and a lot of mental health background as well. So, we really, ultimately, the staff made the decision and shaped it and got everything done, but it felt, it was amazing for all of us to be a part of having a voice and even have that conversation about that role, and we think it's one of the best things this city has ever done and investment they have made, we're really pleased to have Darren, I cannot wait. I just, there's been so much change, it doesn't matter how you feel about things that have happened over the last few years and stuff, there's the one thing that's for sure is that our officers need the support that they need, you know, in the community, that they deserve. And our community deserves to have somebody that's willing to advocate for them and help them get to the resources that are very difficult to navigate. There, there's a shortage of them, they're sometimes hard to find, and the people who need them most do not know how to navigate the system. And so, we just all feel very passionate about that subject, and we actually don't really feel at all, none of us felt that this is going to be a one-person role. Just even with my own experience with many healthcare and diploma, most of these roles, the very least, if I end up with another support staff, once you see the value, the added value, and it starts to reveal itself, I don't think it's going to be difficult to want to find grants, I'm going to help fund that clinical support there. So, anyway, thank you for giving us the opportunity, I'm sure everybody feels the same way, we are very excited about it, so. I did participate in the interviews as well, which was a real privilege and professionally, I don't get allowed opportunities to surprise me anymore, so it's just like, I was ecstatic to be a part of that, see the people that came through and to hear the talents out there and different perspectives, and really excited that we found such a great candidate the first time through, like we have in there, and so, he's a good human, so. So, the other thing we did this year is we were able to do an event, a community outreach event, and it's been a lot of years since we've done anything, a couple of years, simply due to COVID, so we weren't able to go out and really interact with groups of people, so we made a choice, because there were new members on the commission, to keep it bite-sized, something manageable in a group like we did before that we knew were in the crosshairs of what we did and the people that we want to make sure understand what's available to them in the way of human services and resources, so we chose Polaris and did an event out there and had, thank you, Sean, everybody that showed up to come over and set up, and actually, we're there a great portion of the time to see the event and see the people that attended and the range of ages and ethnic backgrounds and stuff and languages that were represented, there were probably around fifty people that attended that event. We were really fortunate, we had approximately, I believe it was ten agencies that showed up, and it was just a different group than we've had before even, and one of the, one that was really great was the Congolese integration network, and they've been an interesting group to fund. They're, they're unique, and, but man, they showed up, they were late, but they showed up and they brought diapers. And they were just so sweet and, and warm, and it was really neat to have them join us, but we had some other ones, we're One Love, YWCA, YWCA Arcadia House from down in the Auburn area. The Street Team, which is a new addition, and I was really surprised to see, Storehouse was there, which was wonderful. Children's Therapy Center, Washington Poison Control came, and Julia was talking, telling me, the guy that, one of the two that was there is actually the director. Showed up on a Saturday, they do community outreach, which was awesome. And, but that's a program that we fund, fully fund, they're, they are wonderful and so efficient with their money, their resources, and everybody can utilize it, which we really like that factor as well. But the turnout was great, and I think the neatest thing when you talk about, the reason we do the events is because we want them to feel connected to the city, we want them to see people with the city logo and the colors and stuff and understand that we're coming to them or meeting them where they're at, which is really the message that people need to hear, that you're trying to build trust with and a rapport with. So, that was the second good reason to go back to Polaris, even though there's a big turnover, there were still people that came back that knew us from before, so you're starting to build that, because they're a small community. Are there any questions about that event, or? Yes?
Debbie, was the previous event, I believe I was at that one before COVID, so there hadn't been any events since COVID, so that was great.
Yeah.
And good that you saw some repeat attendees.
Yeah, they're really popular, so this is a huge thing in my background, the one thing we know food will attract people to every event, it's like the only thing, you can't not, you can't have an event and not have food, it's just not possible, I don't care if it's ice cream or if it's sandwiches. You gotta have food, but they always come and they look forward to it, we did a bingo night early on, just to do something for them and did some surveys to gather information to find out what they, not tell them, but to ask them, what they would find valuable is in the way of information that we could bring to them and to their neighbors, and the way we framed it is that we wanted to know people aren't as inclined to share information about themselves, but they're willing to reach out for help for others, so we framed everything around what do you see the needs are of your neighbors, your friends and neighbors, and so, everything was phrased very carefully and then the types of events that would appeal to them, and we, I mean, we got so much information about how many of them did, were concerned about domestic violence issues or hunger or joblessness or childcare, you name it, and then took the data and correlated them, that we found out, well, we know that seventy-five percent of the people that were responding to joblessness or DV also checked the box for being hungry. So, there were some correlations we pulled from this that still stand true. The only thing that's really changed that we caught through the whole COVID thing is we had done a survey in the community is that how much more widespread these concerns are for depression, anxiety, loss of jobs, all those things, it just, it's all demographics, all socioeconomic levels in, in the community, it's just felt so much stronger those that didn't have a lot of resources, so. That helped. So, the big thing, of course, for us is the grant application process. It was, it was, it's a, I'm just going to be candid with you, so you understand what we're doing, okay? It's my last meeting, I'm just going to lay it out there for you. Oh, perfect. Oh, it's perfect. Uh, yes. Yes, I, I actually, that's supposed to be, wasn't really going to mention that exactly at this moment, but I did, I do the life things in my, my career at the moment, I've had to put in my regulations for, for a while, so. We're making this year count, so, got on the ducks in a row, we've got a great commission. But it is a challenge. He, uh, this is part of, actually, I'm so glad you had this, thank you, because one of the things that came out of this is I had this spreadsheet that I messed with the last times, to help us go through the decision-making process, it's really hard to know, well, what did we fund them last time? And, oh gosh, did we fund them before, then we did fund them last year, we couldn't remember why or how much the money was or anything like that, so. I just want to give a shout-out to Kathy Parker, because she is the new addition to the HR team and she filled in all the data. I, I made a pretty spreadsheet and said, can you please fill in the holes, and she did it, which was the real truth, that was the real work. And so now, the commissioners will be able to go through, and we used it this time, and see that two thousand seventeen, eighteen funding cycle, how much we funded each of the organizations. And all the way up to current, and then we added a column for the ARPA funding, because there are organizations that we've provided funding to that got a really good chunk of funding above and beyond, and one of those in particular was Miami Maple Place, and it's, it's important that we understand that, because what I've been a little concerned about, I mean, we do it willingly, but I'm concerned that there's going to be a level of expectation from these different programs. Storehouse, Miami Maple Place are two that receive a great deal of funding from us, the highest amount of funding regularly, because the needs that they provide are just unquestionable and the and the service is so irreplaceable. So, this allows us now to really recognize where we could put those extra funds and make sure that there's a reasonable level of expectation when we don't have those extra funds next cycle, and for the new commission to be able to have that dialogue as well. This year, you'll see, there, we had four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars in requests across thirty-seven applications. That was a tremendous amount over any previous year in the way of asks with approximately the same number of applications. The budget was two hundred and eighty-six thousand five, so we had to trim off one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And somebody asked, what blew us away this year was just how big some of these asks were, they were really courageous asks on some cards, some programs we've been, never even worked with, and they were shoot for the money. Yeah, yeah, and I'm, I'm the one, but hey, you don't know, let's ask, right, so, but even they surprised me and kind of made me giggle, going, well, they're brave, you know? So, anyway, we were really fortunate, we had an extra hundred thousand dollars that we normally do not have, right?
How much extra, our, our normal budget is a hundred and, yeah.
Yeah, a hundred, it was a hundred, so, and we don't, what, it was.
No, a hundred and fifty thousand, wasn't?
Yes.
A hundred and thirty-six thousand five.
Okay, okay, great, okay, thanks. So, that was, that's a huge amount of money, I mean, as you can see, more than double what we normally have to allocate, and that number has not been increased in a long time, but the needs have just grown astronomically. That would be my one message that I would hope would be heard, even during tough times, to understand how careful we are with the funds and what these organized programs do, even outside, we try to stay local to make sure it's Covington residents or have access to them and can get to them, and then we also are really good stewards, Julie, thank goodness, is helps us do this, be able to make sure that they actually are serving Covington residents, if they're not, we're taking note of that, and we're looking at the funding. And we've had to pull funds, it's really hard to do, but when you have other programs that are performing so well and they're training in their their paperwork, and they're not even asking for much, you know, you really want to make sure that those funds are reallocated to somebody who's, who's doing the work and serving the community that we are intended for. So, it was really, it was kind of a, it was a challenging year, the application quality was like nothing I've ever seen, and I work for a nonprofit, that's saying a lot. I, I think it's a combination of new programs, also staff turnover, and I just don't even know, I don't know, no, it, it was, it was a hard year, but what the consequence of it was was that, to be fair, and to make sure that it was a level playing field, it took a lot of extra work on the part of the commissioners and Julie and Kathy, whatever she did to help us out and stuff too, to get the answers and dig them up, and we had to like dig deeper in our conversations, took so much more time to do it, which was a little you know, work service, but it was still frustrating to, to have to spend that kind of time when they were asking for things, how much wasn't there. But it ultimately, we got all of our questions answered by everybody, you know, large and small, enough that we were able to allocate the funding, you'll see who we allocated to, how much. And then what was really great is that we were able to give, even give some of them more than they asked for, really, really discerning frequencies, and we never get that opportunity, but the other thing that we ended up circling back to, I felt would be really good for this commission is we, through the years, I've been around here for a while, so, there were offered these programs that would pop up or needs that just like ripped your heart out, and there was no funding left, because we'd allocated all of it to grants, and we wished we'd had it or something would show up and we would give them whatever, you know, I guess we had, you know, just to help them any way we could, but this time, we put a savings account aside, we had the luxury of putting thirty thousand dollars aside in a savings account, basically, that will allow us that opportunity. They'll still be vetting, this next two years vetting, you know, people making sure they're meeting their numbers, and some money may come but ultimately, this gives the commission an opportunity for programs like the Street Team. Perfect example of an amazing team that showed up, that's doing crazy, great work, and will be working with Darren directly. The very thing you've invested in, and help expand on that and direct funds to things that he may identify out there, and programs that are doing a lot for us, because he's made that connection and you know, help us be more robust in our ability to do outreach. I invite any other commissioners that participated. Do you have any other insight or thoughts about how the process went, Samantha, it's her first year, she's our youth commissioner.
It was just interesting to to hear the conversations that went on, it was very focused on youth specifically.
Did you like, did you enjoy the process?
Yeah, it was fun, it was.
It was very candid, it was an interesting year. Sammy, too. Catherine, you always have an opinion.
I can't top, actually, what you said, and once again, I want to thank council for giving us the opportunity to utilize Darren. Yeah, it was, it was a tough process, a lot of meat out there, a lot of handed grants, asks, tough to get through, but yeah, I'm pretty happy with what we came up with, and I appreciate that, but I really can't add any more. Thank you.
Yeah, so, any questions from the council about how we approach funding, yeah?
I did have a couple of questions about, about the funding, I'm always there, whenever I see large sums over what we, what they're requested, or even like granditically smaller sums than what have been requested, I always kind of have a question or two, like can youth and family services behavioral health, we gave an extra ten thousand dollars to, just kind of wondering. That was just the first one that popped out.
I know, I am happy, you should ask.
Yeah, and then the other one I have is, can you give me a rundown on, I see we didn't fund the YWCA Seattle Kingsley Homish gender violence, and they were asking for ten thousand, and seeing their average score of thirty-one point six seven, and I saw a couple of them that had average scores lower than that, that we did fund. And can you tell me about that particular one, and then why we chose not to fund them, when there were others who had lower scores than them?
That's a really great observation and question. With, with those particular ones, what, it really depended on the service they provide. If they have a history with us, and that history, they're not serving Covington residents, or if they're just asking us money, because they're just asking the whole world for money. And, and we're in the crosshairs of that, and yet, you look at their history and they served every other community but Covington. Those types of things that are going in, it's very detailed, the gender violence one, it was one that we had a lot of conversation about, that was a, that was actually a tough one, and ultimately, came to the fact that it's more, it's a lot of these programs that you see that don't have funding are ignored. And literally, just are not. We even discussed, oh, they're up north, but, you know, and even then, we still all said, we need to put it someplace down here, another program like a perfect example is the Arcadia House or One Love or things that, programs that help address or provide housing and shelter for the very, the gender violence, the people that would be.
I was, I was just wondering on that one, because we know that in the last couple of years, we've had cases that have gone up, and maybe a chance we can get to help people who are coming out of that is a great idea, but if it's one of those ones where they're not serving our community, I can.
Yeah, and so, those aren't easy decisions for us, you know, so I, I don't feel, we don't, I'm defensive at all, good question, we want you to understand it too, because they're not, the citizens aren't made in a vacuum, they're very heavily discussed.
No, that was, that was the only question I had.
What was another one, as far as large amounts?
I just, the other one was definitely
They can't use.
The, can't youth panel services, they, they requested fifteen, and we gave them twenty-five, and this is just my thought, King County Bar Foundation with their neighborhood legal clinics, I know that that's helped a lot of people in our area in the past. Just wondering why we couldn't have like given them a little more, because there, again, a lot of people coming out of domestic violence situations are going to need lawyers or those clinics to help them. What was our thought process on that?
So, with King County Bar Association, we actually have an attorney sitting on the commission that works with people, with them, and, and she actually, then, we had the push comes to shove, she didn't see the value in funding them at all this year, but ultimately, we were able to this year with the extra funding and that what was available, it, it worked out, but the reason was, they're, they're great, really great service, but people weren't utilizing. That's why our numbers have changed dramatically, and you would think with domestic violence and homelessness and all the things that they help with, you would think those numbers would be up and those, that outreach.
Is that just an outreach problem from them, or is that just, people are finding other avenues?
I don't think it's other avenues necessarily, I mean, because of the range of things that they provide services on, I think it has more to do with outreach, more outraged people, awareness, and then also, I don't know how available the current is either, you know, right now, because there's such a shortage in just about everything. So, some of the, the other thing, there is an important one on here. Storehouse was a whopper. So, Storehouse, we funded them the full twenty thousand dollars. We have also put an extra ten thousand dollars of funding towards them, it'll be a conditional agreement that will monitor reports, making sure that grants, everything, everything is in order, they have really, I feel a strong leader in there now that's working very hard to get things squared away, and organized in a way that we can feel good putting that many tax dollars towards the program, and I can proudly stand up in city council in a public forum and say, this is, this is fair, equitable, and it all, the accountability measures are in place, and I feel really good about the work, Julie helped me, the mayor, I've had a lot of conversations and stuff with the commission and stuff, just trying to feel really good about getting another thirty thousand, the conditional part of the agreement on this, this contract will be to make sure the measures are there, but also dat- data gathering that quantifies the, that was something that was supposed to be in place a few years ago, that didn't come to fruition, but they do have program to do it. So, now they'll be able to provide more information that makes it easier to know who's coming, what the needs are, what they're receiving, and how much money is being spent on those things, and allows us to decide, well, good, you know what, that's great, then let's put another thousand dollars towards immediate needs that aren't covered by other programs. This one, we just really want focused on, we gave ten thousand dollars to the program Babies of Homelessness, because they specifically house, bring diapers to Storehouse. That's where they store it, so we don't, with Storehouse, we wanted to go to food, we don't want it into operations, and what our hope is, is that they can use those extra funds to do what they're there to do, you know, to be able to make sure that our friends and neighbors are not walking away without food and not having enough. And then be able to use that to focus on that, and then use their extra energy and any other resources they want towards operational improvements that they would like to make. New vehicles, whatever they want to do, hopefully, this will help them, that they can put this towards the food and resources that we're intending these funds for, and then find other sources for the other needs, yes.
I was thrilled to see the extra money to behavioral health, because you guys, year after year, what what a high need that is across society, like not much within our community, so, well done. I hope to see more and more of it going to those organizations. Becoming greater and available.
I had a couple of questions, it's interesting you brought up One Love and Salvation Army, I, why are they not on this list, have we not ever given them money?
One Love and Salvation Army, certainly.
Yeah.
Do we not see them?
Now, not Salvation Army. One Love we have.
Should I speak from there?
Yes.
So, One Love did not apply again. Unfortunately, that's an agency that I've had to repay funds from.
Okay.
Their numbers are just very low.
Okay.
And then, for some reason, the Salvation Army didn't apply for funds, and I don't know why.
Yeah, I was curious, I was talking to them at the.
Street Team, yeah.
And it sounded like, though I could have understood incorrectly, that they go through Covington on their off day, like we're not officially on the list. And so, I'm curious why that is, and if they have nothing to do with funding, and that was just the perception, the person actually was in my neighborhood, they're still in school together, but which I thought was, I was fascinated, I didn't want to say they weren't there, but it, it was like, oh, I don't want to say afterthought, but we're not like on, on the list list, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I don't know why, like, I got that specifically, but I did want to clarify with Reagan and Casey's help, we were able to give the Salvation Army ten thousand in hard debt funding, so I don't know if that will change possibly, I, you know.
And that's different than how I.
Okay.
Well, and that's kind of what I thought, but they were like, they even were naming the cities, so and so's Monday, blah, 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 and, oh, we, you know, hit Covington on our off day, it was like that, it was like.
I don't care if it's an off.
We can get.
I think they're coming more than once a month, I mean.
Does everybody know what Street Team does, what they're, the services they're providing?
I would mind a recap, I'm vaguely aware of them, but.
It's important that you know.
I, agreed, and I was going to say that Polaris event, even though it's for the residents of Polaris as council members, so super helpful to walk, walk around and talk to each of those booths and just find out what they're doing.
You have an update on that Street Team?
Yeah, so, the Street Team basically does homeless outreach, and their, their premise is to really reduce barriers for those that are experiencing homelessness to find shelter of some type. Whether that's like giving them a cell phone, so they can make phone calls to the family, or paying moving costs, or, or even flying them back home to some family member. Their, their goal is to help unsheltered people, mostly.
They do, so they actually, yeah, they actually drive around and get out and, and go and talk to people and really do that, that interface and that connection that a lot of. That connection that a lot of people are hesitant to do, it's just. Amazing, so it sounds very similar to what U G M does on their street outreach, they.
Yeah.
Go out.
It's pretty close, they, they work hand in hand, yeah.
Thank you, I have two more questions, Debbie, about that. Um are there organizations that offer mortgage assistance?
There are some, uh yes, uh. Uh Catholic Community Services is one that we give a great deal of funds for and also why we haven't directed funds to Storehouse. For the extra. Assistances because we give a lot to Catholic Community Services to do that, so we focus those, but that funding source there and. Um and Storehouse can refer to them.
Is that the volunteer services in that blanket of mortgage assistance?
No, that one's different, um so there's Catholic Community Services, um gosh, who else helps with that?
It recently came.
I know, so I.
On a personal connection level and so that's why I'm asking, because I see all of this money going to places like Find Maple. And then to hear and see them being turned away.
Yes, um I'd like to talk with you offline.
Okay.
Personal friend.
Yes. Totally, but, but mortgage assistance, that is something.
And um unfortunately no one that provides mortgage assistance applied. However, um there are agencies within King County that I was able to find. Um it's out there, you know, and I, I don't know if it's. Do we ask those agencies, please apply for this funding and do we outreach on our own? I don't know, maybe that's something that we need to do, it, it's, it's hard to say, that's an avenue we need to go down, but.
There, there's not a lot funding mortgage assistance. Pretty specialized.
Well, I know we had these discussions like earlier in the pandemic, how a lot of. Not how landlords were being negatively impacted by people unable to pay and so what, you know, what are resources for them? So it's, it does seem to be something that's lacking, so okay, that's.
Rental assistance is what, that's the thing I was trying to think about. And uh there was another program I thought it offered something in the way of that, but uh one thing I will say about finding me. Place that they didn't turn anybody away in the last funding cycle, they were able to take care of everybody there.
Right, but if they don't do mortgage assistance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so I have been under the impression that they did.
Oh, oh, okay.
Because at least the presentation that I went to buy them made it sound like it. It was part of the slide.
I think during twenty twenty when we, when we were funding the new services, I think it was the Catholic. New services because there was mortgage assistance, you're right, um there was mortgage assistance, but there was the two, it was binding, binding case and Catholic. That we, that we give a pretty.
Okay.
And so you're not seeing Catholic Community Services Emergency Assistance on here and I had a direct conversation with them about why they didn't apply. And they wanted the money to go to save our park, which is rational for not applying.
Okay.
Whether I agree with that, it's another thing, but that was their rationale for not applying.
And then last question, um I thought that we also sent House Bill and I never remember the number.
Fourteen oh six.
Thank you, I'm gonna say twelve ninety. On this as well. For human services to know how much money is going to other. The other avenues from city funds.
Yes, so uh I had asked about that before, but it's kind of hard. Was it difficult to pull that kind of information about the different funding?
Just like Harba.
No, but it might impact their decision and how much to give them if they know binding.
Definitely matters and it's also allows uh, allows us the temper expectations the group or asks also because. Um exactly what we thought would happen, uh give a bunch of money to some people and they came back with some massive asks and their baseline, like there you go.
Jennifer's talked about is the fourteen oh six funds and, and we did inform the, the commission on that about a year and a half ago. Uh is it about forty thousand, something here and it's called a binding place on that. The hospital fifteen ninety, uh I don't think we're giving any of those funds away right now. Uh they, they pay for the community care specialists and everything else isn't.
How much of that money goes towards finding?
I think it's about forty thousand.
I'd have to add some.
I got my budget.
Okay, yeah, that's it, okay.
But that's a separate part of money than what we have, because we allocated this.
Yeah.
Money to come out of our general fund. The fourteen oh six comes out of a different fund that we can change at any time. So, and we put that towards rental assistance with binding.
Okay, um. I, I think uh one, one thing I would say is. That is why I wanted to know what funding we can throw towards, towards uh other programs. Because that's a permanent source of funding that they receive that if we'd known that, we would have changed it um without a doubt. Um it's a huge amount of money and uh so.
I'd like to verify.
If we could do that.
It's right around what I said, I, I can find out, I, I, I know we gave that information to the commission.
You did, you did a long time ago.
I remember last funding cycle, we had this, we had fourteen oh six funds and I, I stopped reading, um okay, let's rethink this.
Yeah, um. That would be something that maybe you do designate it to something very specific in the way to service as a council could consider that. Um just, I mean, that's a. Already giving them a substantial more amount more than we ever gave them in the first place and, and this is like what, you know, triple.
Well, one of the things, because this same issue came up the last time this joint meeting was held.
And I brought it up.
And, and so, and so the council at that point decided to retain those funds for them to use in their budget process. If this is going to be, um you know, something where decisions need to be made based on what fourteen oh six funds are going. Then that's a decision I think the council's gonna have to make, we give those funds to the commission to, to disperse.
I thought we just were giving them visibility, that's what.
Which, which we did, it's the same every year and that's the council doesn't make that to buy major.
Uh with a bunch of volunteers that are not looking at these meetings all the time, I mean, we never would have known that, so you know, I think it'd be really helpful to the group. Especially new people to have that, I think if we add that column in.
Yeah.
Um it'd be really helpful and then is it possible that, we haven't had a budget increase on the commission budget for.
Four, four years?
Yeah, it's been something early, my first, when I first started, if uh we could supplement it, I guess that's a little bit more money, we wouldn't have this big balloon.
There's, there, there is some, I believe some options available with the fifteen ninety funds, that's a separate. Um there could be some, uh we can use a portion of that for uh for mental health services. Um so we'd have to be really deliberate with obviously doing that, but too, there's different reporting standards and stuff. I think for those reasons, it hasn't been clumped into the human services funding, but those are decisions the council.
The other programs, um Health Point is uh provides medical and dental, may cater health. Um they get people uh insured that didn't know they even qualify for insurance, they, they have so many services within, under one roof. That um that is one area, they're a two nonprofit healthcare system and they. Have uh, they have the qualifications of federally qualified healthcare system. Although the federal dollars are a fraction of their budget, they um get that qualification. And it is based on extremely high standards beyond anything you see in the private healthcare industry. That's scrutinized and the whole goal of Health Point and programs like theirs is that it's to ensure that if. I can go in there, I have great insurance, I go in there and they're happy to take me and I get great care and I don't have to worry about walking out my prescriptions and stuff. But what's important is if, if my cousin is homeless, has lost his job and is struggling, struggling with mental health issues. And uh doesn't have, you know, anything, he's gonna walk in the door and get the exact same service I'm getting, they're not looking at his insurance. There's a sliding fee scale, um they, he's not going to walk out the door uh out of urgent care worrying about whether he's. He can only afford the painkillers for a toothache or the antibiotics, I mean, people literally die from this stuff, so. That's what's really cool about Health Point and you can't go wrong with healthcare like that right now and being a nonprofit healthcare system. They're about, they're getting hit pretty hard uh with some of the funding changes that are going on. And so I worked for community healthcare, that's that exact same system in Pierce County, that's why I can attest to what they do here. And um if you want to give extra funding to somebody that provides behavioral health care and has partnerships with places like. Uh Valley Cities and stuff like that, Health Point would be a really good dialogue for you guys to have and maybe talk to them. Um.
Debbie, I would agree, I've been to Hot Point, I've been uninsured in my life and I've had an amazing, very comparable to mental care experience.
That's great.
I've had family members in that, uh obviously, it was exactly the two things, the cash and no way to pay for it, had it amazing, it's serious.
I'm really, I, I love what we do, it's a, um it's, I couldn't be. After doing this for thirteen years, just because uh. That's why I'm here, you know, why I've been doing this for the last five years, there are a lot of people needed, a lot of people working. Uh my daughter is one of those people that is, she has a college degree, she is so smart and talented and stuff and uh everything. But she's the working force, you know, she works full time, she's always had a job, always, her whole life has always had a job and it's always had a great. Work ethic, but she doesn't make enough to make rent on her own, she could not be single again and live on her own, what she makes or for, for the car payment. You know, and these, there's so many people in our community that are just like that, Polaris is full of them, mind you. Uh but it's everywhere and uh Health Point serves all of them. And so they're an incredible resource beyond your wildest dreams and, and uh some of their clinics are really small, but then they have to be comprehensive ones. To have all the services under one roof, so when somebody finds their way to our doors, have everything they need under that one roof. You know, they walk out with it. And uh so behavioral health is why I say that, because the other things that we have uh committed. Fin- financially, we brought up can't use in family services to be heater help. Um aspects why we gave them so much more money, this time it's because of their funding sources, we are a big source of their funding. And uh they serve our community very, very specifically, our children and um. They're really great, also because they're actually meeting them where they're at as well, which is a very valuable thing to do. Um when you're talking about being in schools right here in Huntington. Um and the, they also cover the behavioral aspects of kids' care. Um and then finding maple place, none of us could say enough about what they do for this community. And we have consistently given them more money and recommendations to them because uh they do so much. Under one roof, it's a lot like Health Point, it's like the most bang for your buck, it's, it's just such a great program. Uh it's like Health Point, they walk in the door and the people who need it most, that don't know where to go, once they find their way to the door, they've got. Domestic violence, the, you know, support, they have uh behavioral health support, they have a roof over their heads, their kids have support, they have food. Job training, you know, they're teaching them to fish, it's all the things and uh I just don't think we could say enough about what they've done, so it's. Not like it's not money well spent, but you still, we are talking now at all other levels when you're talking about the extra forty grand. Uh because they do have other sources of funding and that's one thing we look at. If we give more, do they have other sources of funding? You know, Health Point, yeah, they do, but what Health Point has is called the Patient Care Fund. And something similar to that and a hundred percent of the donations that they receive goes to care for people who are uninsured. Or underinsured and so every dollar works towards that, so that's another thing.
Yeah, so binding the place, we can check the law, but the H, HB fourteen oh six only is for emergency assistance. Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's for housing, there's a common right, for housing, which is good.
So this thirty five then would go to support all the other programs, that behavioral health. Uh their job retraining, all their classes, their children's teacher, like everything else. So the fourteen oh six is only emergency.
So, so if it's still forty grand, that, that is still a lot of money, I can tell you from my own job. That is a still a ton of money to have every single year, um is there something in place that you know how they? They. Yeah, yeah, it'd be really interesting to see how that works, but what a great resource, that makes. How's the commission feel about that? Do you feel better knowing that for housing?
Feel like they're the conduit for that, funding that money because they seem to be in best position to be able to allocate that for people that need it, but. If there's another organization that can do it well or differently and split the money on.
It will be local one, other than that is Catholic Community Services, it provides homeless uh rental assistance and mortgage assistance. So um and it's expensive, to bail somebody out so they don't leave their house and their apartment is.
Right, these numbers mean nothing.
They usually show up when they're already months behind, you know, and mortgage for a one bit of apartment or rent right now is running at two grand a month. For just that, you can imagine, and that's, that's over here at Polaris, you know, so.
I had general, not related to how, how it broke down, um I think it's great that you've got that extra thirty for reserve for. Things that Darren may find and I'm just curious, had you had that um luxury in past years or is this the first year? That you were able to fit that budget aside?
Yeah, this was the first year and it was such a, so, so many wonderful. It's such a gift to have that much money that we actually could give extra um to others, um but it really seemed. Prudent to do that, just what we've learned and knowing that we have this dramatic change in our ability to tap into resources. Having some of the output, building those relationships is uh, um thirty thousand dollars could do a lot, uh large and small. For a program.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm looking at twenty twenty three, uh there fortunately can start doing site visits again. We have so many new commissioners, I'm like, oh, they haven't even seen any of these great programs and gone to the site visits, it's one of the best parts of being on the commission. Um where you get to go and see what they do firsthand and hear about their programs, see like, we want to see Dawn, you know. And walk through their program and what they had developed and um Washington Poison Control, it's just so interesting and fun and it. It, it uh vests you in the decisions differently and a lot of added value to doing it, so they'll be able to do a lot more of that now with COVID. Uh taking their back burner these days, um especially agencies that, you know, that we have funded for a first time. We have regular term issues within around a while, but haven't seen any of these newer agencies too that they would like to see. And then uh they're transitioning, so what it looks like twenty twenty three, they're gonna have to have a dialogue. Cause as I mentioned earlier, I had to unfortunately put in my resignation. Um and they'll be transitioning to a, a new chair and how that looks will really be up to the commission to sit, you know, figure what that vision is. Um what kind of commitment the new uh chair is able to uh make and um. I'll have to lay that out, but I, I just want to say, um I'm doing this like five years. Um and it's been a privilege to, to serve on the commission and uh. Yeah, and to serve the community, I started here a lot of years ago when I was a young mom. And uh when the city park was just a vision, we didn't know if we could ever get it and I said, my grandkids are gonna be using it, it's not my kids and guess what? I live, I'm stone throw away from that park now, great kids on the way. But uh it's just such a pleasure to come back just years later and participate and work with such phenomenal people as what I have on the commission. Julie and uh, and the other real important thing that I said before is that I do not feel, I don't waste my time. I have lots of other things to do, we all do, we're all busy and as you are and it's a choice to serve. And that um I just always feel heard and I've been worthwhile to spend my time here, you know. And I really appreciate that of a council. And I really appreciate that of a council. I'm around. I just can't, uh my career, I'm building a huge health center in Dallas. It's for good reasons. I've been very mission driven and my goal in life is always. If I die tomorrow, I want to make sure whatever I'm doing is impacting as much of life as possible. So that next stage I go to, I always want to know, like. If I do this, then think about how many lives that's going to help, you know? And uh the, putting my dues at this organization and now get to build a forty three thousand square foot health center. Right down in the heart of Piala on the street and I hope they'll find it, buy it, and now I'm building it from the start to finish. And it's gonna help tens of thousands of people, but the sacrifice to them, I had no much for two years. And uh so, plus my regular job that goes with it in operations. And so uh if this is just gotten too much, I don't know how to do anything halfway. And uh we have a really great commission, a really great group of people. I am available, I just couldn't be more than two.
Well, and I just want to say thank you. We've, we've been on the commission together.
Yeah, from the beginning, so.
I mean, you've just been such, I can always be why I need to lead a great meeting and just follow through with everything and. Um just not only logistically, but you really care. You care about our community and it really shows with all the detail that we put into everything, so.
I just thank you so much. I appreciate that. I would also like to say, when uh my dear down there. Really killed me. It's also uh given up her position and it's moving on and she is uh. One of the most phenomenal human beings and does work. Humbling work, all I can say and what a, what a treasure you've meant, what a privilege it's been to have your voice representing. Out here in a community. Yeah, authentic. Well, thank you. It's your time and uh. Pressing great questions.
Mission members, you guys, we're doing a lot of hard work. Um especially going through that book, but not just by going through that every two years. Constantly staying involved with each of these organizations. You know, looking at the, you know, the, the quarterly, these organizations, the quarterly reports, turn numbers in. We visit, we work with them, we talk with them, we do outreach through the Polaris and other events. You do a lot of hard work in this community and it shows what you do and it's very much appreciated. So, so thank you.